Travis, you look like a million bucks as always. Hi Sue. Looks like you're outside or it's just your background. Okay, well, I'll go ahead and open up the pre-meeting for the Planning Commission. You recording Zach? You ready to go?
We are missing Ned, so when he comes in.
I'll acknowledge Ned. We'll slow clap him in when he comes. So I'll open up the pre-meeting for November 5th, 2020. In attendance, we have Phil Markham, who's the Chair, and then I'm Scott Woodbury, the acting or the Vice Chair, but I'll be acting as Chair tonight. We have Lisa Milkovich, we have Maren Patterson, Travis Nay, Sue Wilson, and then from staff, we have Susan Nixon, and we have Zach. And I blanked you. I forget your last name. Well, I know what it is. Smallwood. I read Hall. I looked at it and I'm like, I know your last name Zach, so sorry Zach, I apologize. We just need to hang out.
That's alright.
So Zach Smallwood, and I guess it looks like we have two items on the agenda today. So who's going to be doing those? Mr. Smallwood, you're gonna do them both?
Both. Did you guys want to go through the minutes first? Were there minutes?
Yeah, yeah, I just wanted to make sure. I jumped ahead. I'm just being proactive because sometimes I don't have time. But let's go through the meetings or the minutes. So did everyone have a chance to look at those?
Yep.
Any changes or comment or?
I had one I wanted to bring up. I just have to find my purple crayon.
That's awesome that you use a crayon.
Okay, on page three, fourth paragraph, the fourth paragraph that starts with Mr. Hall said subdivisions. The last sentence there, "A townhome development would get passed UDOT because it only requires an access road." Should that be passed as P-A-S-T or should it be get passed by UDOT? P-A-S-S-E-D by, passed by UDOT? Just a little language clarification.
Well, is it passed like as in a vote?
Yeah, that's my question. I just didn't quite understand the verbiage.
And shouldn't there be a by in there? Isn't that what you're saying Sue?
Yeah, or a different spelling of past.
How about approved instead of passed?
Yeah, that sounds better.
Ratified?
Yeah, approved, I think is appropriate.
And by, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We can do that.
Then I have one on page nine.
But that's all I have.
Okay, Mr. Travis, page nine, thank you Sue.
Seventh paragraph, page nine, second sentence. It says, "Mr. Hacker stated he too much has been taken away." I don't really know what we're doing with that sentence.
We don't either.
So something's wrong with it.
Oh yeah, I missed that one.
If we can.
Too much has been taken. He stated too much has been taken away.
Well, and speaking of Mr. Hacker, he did just join us for the record. Hello Ned.
Hello.
So do we know what that was? Mr. Hacker stated he too much has been taken away? Yeah, I mean, I know that's pretty, that's what you said. I was, I missed this meeting. So I was trying to, I was surprised by what you too much has been taken away.
That sounds like something I would say, not Mr. Hacker.
I thought that was like a Buck Swainy pontification.
I was clicking on the numerous links that I got to get in and I was waiting for a meeting for the last 10 minutes.
Well, Ned, you gotta be careful just randomly cooking on links and emails.
Yeah, exactly.
So do we know what that Mr. Hacker stated? Do we know what he was trying to say there?
I know what I was trying to say.
Page nine Ned.
Pardon me?
Page nine.
I know.
Okay.
I think there's only supposed to be a that in there. A that, second pair.
But too much has been.
Second line, "Mr. Hacker stated that much has been taken away from the current guidelines."
Yeah, heck, that sounds right.
I think that's it.
Okay.
Full meeting minutes. But I don't know what I was trying to say anyway.
That's all right. It still is helpful and impressive. Okay, all right, anything else in the minutes? Nothing else? Okay, sweet. And it looks like there are no findings of fact today. So, all right, does anybody have any conflicts of interest with either of the items?
No.
No.
Nope. Okay. Now, now that I know Zach and I, my brain fart has gone away and I remember your last name was Smallwood. Mr. Smallwood, why don't you walk us through Agenda Item Number Four?
Yep, so that is, you'll have to be patient with me because this was Jared's item, but he decided he wanted to go have dinner instead. So you guys can get him in the business next time. No, it's all right. Tell him to, he's doing a good job. So this is Big Dog Stitch and Screen. They are an embroidery and screen printing business located 312 West Vine Street. It's been a kind of an industrial type use for quite a number of years, and they are just wanting to continue doing that.
It was, it was the A and E Generator Shop for probably 25 years.
There you go.
Wasn't there a dry cleaner there too? Wasn't there a dry cleaner?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the space they're going into, I believe, is the old dry.
It is the dry cleaner. They didn't do a very good job of dry cleaning.
Apparently.
Yeah.
So it's a 34, or 3,425 square foot unit. They embroider sports gear. Gonna have three employees. Let's see. We are requiring five parking spaces. They have six on the east side of the property and two immediately in front of the unit. So they have eight total, which is more than what's required. Trash enclosure, there is not a dumpster enclosure, so staff is recommending that they either install one or they house it in, inside the unit. The last thing which I wanted to bring up is the site improvements, the public improvements. Jared brought this up. So we don't anticipate this to be a long-term use. And with this property going to develop sometime in the future, those public improvements, there could be right-of-way widths that we are going to need. So Jared had made the call that we don't feel that this use is, is strong enough to trigger a complete full installation of the mixed-use improvements there. So that was kind of the big thing that I was the most nervous to talk about because typically we do that.
Yeah, I did want to ask you about that and maybe because it was Jared's thing. But what is the timeline of redevelopment that we're looking at? Like how long would it be?
And what's triggered that thought?
Typically, typically, so I'll try to answer both. Typically, we are, so as you know, we've approved, or you as the Planning Commission have approved the Bonnie View site, which you actually are going to get an amended version of that in a couple of weeks. Just down the road, we have EMI here, we have Murray Crossing here. We have the school district that is still fairly new. So we anticipate, this is one of the last properties on that corner, couple of properties to develop. As part of that, I'm part of the Mid Valley BRT, which stands for Bus Rapid Transit. That is going to be, I just found out it's going to be federalized. And it's going to bring a pretty reliable 15-minute bus service, I believe, to that area. And they're going to need to take some right-of-way from that to install a station that looks not dissimilar from a track station. It's, they're pretty intense stations. And so. Here's pictures, it's on page four of your packet. You can actually see if you look in there, there's a bus stop right there. And that's where somebody is standing and that's where that station is going to go. So that, I believe, is part of the thinking there as well, that we anticipate that this is going to redevelop. I believe this applicant, I think she only has a year contract. We can double check with her. I'm not as 100%, like I said, I'm not really up to speed completely on this project. So that's kind of where we're at.
We require it so many.
But it sounds like she's.
Sorry, Maren.
No, you're fine.
Well, I was just gonna say, we, for a lot of places, use a conditional use permit as a way to get something into compliance, and I totally understand, like, it would be pointless to have them do this park strip and do the sidewalk if it's all going to be torn out. But there, yeah, I just was really surprised that we weren't going to require any landscaping.
Yeah, and I think that's, that's going to be an exception and not the rule. This, this really was, because we expect this to probably flip sometime fairly soon.
Is that like one year or like three years?
Well, our business license for one year, so if, we can always readdress it with renewal of the business license or no?
That's been something that Jared brought up. I'm not sure if.
Can you impose additional conditions at the business license?
I don't think so. I think we can only do the, once it's approved conditionally, that's, that's kind of it. However, if for some reason, a new, so how we treat conditional use permits in the city, we do it by each individual unit. So say like something, say like an exact same thing, another Stitch and Screen wanted to move into the unit next door. We would have to take it back through a conditional use permit process. And if we're starting to see that that's what's really happening, I think Jared would then call for those to be implemented at that time. Does that make sense?
Yeah, can you do something like, I mean, or is this just unfair to the client, to the customer? You know, the applicant saying, hey, we anticipate this changing, but we want to reassess in a year. And then at that time, if it's not going anywhere, then we would impose the conditions. Because I agree with Maren, like it's, I'm fine to make exceptions when they're warranted, but unless we, I don't know. I think even a year improvement looks good, and that place doesn't look good right now. So I don't know.
Yeah, like, I mean, however long until it gets redeveloped would be an improvement. I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, and you can't say whether it's been sold or anything, I know, but, but I mean, it's, it just seems like even a year, if you could get, just anyway, that's my two bits.
So how about this? I know the Tribune posted an article today that said that this project's moving forward, the BRT line is moving forward within the next two or years. I don't imagine them being able to run BRT through this area without expanding the size of that bridge and changing the right-of-way. I think Jared's making the right call here personally. I think that if we really do have the money to move forward on this project, this area is going to be forced to change. It's not going to change the project, but, but the area in front of this is going to be taken at some point for additional access.
Well, and I totally agree. It doesn't make sense to require something that they then have to tear out. I just don't know if the whole rest of the site doesn't require any improvements or, you know what I mean? Like, I get not requiring it in the park strip or, but the whole site as a whole, is there other ways they could meet the landscaping requirement?
Well, and as we all know right now, there's no guarantees in the economy. It's a two-year project, and am I turning to a six-year project because of things that are happening in the community currently? How many units are in that area?
In that building?
Three.
I think it's close to 300.
Three.
No, in this location, Zach, is that like three?
Oh, oh, sorry. Sorry, I was on the multifamily. I heard units, so my head went.
I was just wondering how many.
Three total, three.
I was asking, wondering the likelihood of turnover, how frequently turnover and how often, if it is really something we will address in a year from one of those units or not.
I think the BRT changes everything here. I mean, we've talked about it for years and years and years and years. But now the fact that they're actually moving forward with it, that is going to cause additional changes in the area. Front-runner tracks and BRT, there's nowhere else in the valley that does all of that in a single stop. This property will be recognized quickly by somebody.
Yeah, I mean, and largely it is up to you guys. You can take our recommendations. Or if you feel like that you do want to see some of that landscaping installed, that is entirely within your guys' purview and you guys are allowed to require that if you'd like. And so either way, that's definitely up to you.
Zach, are there other people, there are three units in that building. Who's in the other two units?
That's a great question, and I don't know. Well, let me see, let's see if I can pull it up real quick.
Because, I mean, and I know you can't go back and impose any on those other two units. But I mean, if there's other businesses coming there, then it certainly, even for short-term, two years, would benefit the aesthetics of it.
And I need to glance again. There was discussion about curb and gutter and sidewalks versus landscaping. Are we separating those out? Because we can say, don't make the high-dollar improvements, just make the low-dollar improvements of landscaping.
Which you could, you could definitely, those aren't mutually exclusive, so they don't have to go hand in hand. So you could require the landscaping upgrades without the sidewalk upgrades if that's what you guys would like to do. Sorry, I'm just trying, I'm looking up my business licenses while we're doing this.
I mean, I mean, I guess my personal thoughts are, it'd be nice to see, but it's a small project. It's really probably not that big of a deal.
Everything in this area is just a temporary condition right now, to be very honest with you. That's why there hasn't been a lot of money put into any of these other buildings, the garages across the street, the garage on the corner. They're, they're just kind of waiting and who knows who even owns them now, you know? And they're just letting tenants just ride it out until something comes along.
Yeah, I agree.
So there is a pool construction company in one unit and I believe a cleaners company.
Cleaners is in 314.
Yeah.
The dry cleaner?
Yeah.
Okay, so I have to, the dry cleaners are still there.
Okay.
But I agree with what you've said, but is there the potential that it becomes like the mechanic man on the corner of 48th and, what is that, where we have, we're almost a property, we're tearing down the MCCD area, we're putting in nice new buildings, and that one building's not going anywhere.
Box Elder.
Box Elder in 4800 South beside the, across from the fire station.
I mean, yeah, I mean, that's always a possibility. I can't, like, we can't force anybody to sell. But at some point, I think the amount of money that they could get offered might outweigh that. But I can't, I mean, that's just real estate speculation too.
But if we get to that point, whoever's renting, at least when they come to us again, we can ask for upgrades. We can, yeah. I kind of like the idea of landscaping, but not heavy, high dollars.
Yeah, and you can definitely, if that's what the commission decides on, that's, that's for sure, I think, that you guys could do.
I mean, how do other people feel about that?
Well, we, you know, we can hash it out in the meeting really. I think we should.
Okay, all right. Oh, yeah, we gotta, we gotta go. Other item, anything else on this one? On the Big Dog Stitch and Screen? Nope. Okay, last item is the Brooke and Kathy Thomas accessory dwelling unit. And Zach, that'll be you again.
Yep, so this one's pretty straightforward. There is one little hitch that I'll get into. But so this is a 3,500 square foot house. They're proposing to do a 950 square foot accessory dwelling unit with two bedrooms, living area. It's actually pretty straightforward. Let's see, I want to get in. Just want to double-check my stuff here. Real no concerns. So initially, so I provided in your packet, I believe, the original site plan and the amended site plan. One showing the entrance on the left-hand side. We actually don't allow for like an encroachment in your, in your side, corner side yard setback. So they needed to move that, and they didn't have enough time to turn that around and get me a new site plan that shows where that's going to be, because he's still working on that in the rear. However, there's nothing in our current code that requires him to have an exterior entrance. And it will be reviewed during the building permit phase as well. If he decides to put in an exterior entrance, a basement walkout. He intends to put that in the rear of his property, from my understanding. So, and he actually is more confident with that because then the entrance will actually go into the living area as opposed to into a storage area that then connects to the accessory dwelling unit, if that makes sense.
It do.
Questions, comments, concerns?
And you verified the square footage on this one?
Yes, I did.
Okay, because I just wasn't sure with the entry, looking like it was coming in through the storage room, how that all.
Even with that, it's, it's, it's in that 950.
Okay, and then I just noticed off to the side it said 1,000 square feet. And then I thought, well, maybe they just mean they can have up to 1,000 square feet, and they just made a little note.
Yeah, I believe that was the case. I've been working with the Thomases for a little while now.
Okay, all right, that was my only question.
Is that supposed to reassure us that?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
It is.
Okay.
Be reassured.
What do people do that already have a entrance on the side of, in their side yard? Do those just?
Typically, those are usually, so we would allow them normally if they're outside that setback. So there's a 20-foot setback between the corner side yard and, and your house. So as long as they're outside that 20 feet, they're okay. They can, they can have that entrance there. You can't have an accessory dwelling unit entrance there, but you can have an entrance to your house there.
Okay, all right. I just wondered for all those grandparents that are having their kids move back home.
Well, the intent there is that it's not used as a main entrance for public, so the house looks like a duplex. You can see two entrances. It's right, the intent is to maintain the appearance of a single-family home, right?
Yes. I don't agree with that, but yes, that's what our laws state right now. But I think, doesn't matter. That's what, that's what it is right now, and that's intent. Yes.
Okay, thanks for clearing that up.
Yeah, no problem.
Okay, any other questions on this one for Zach?
I'm not as fun as Jared. I don't make as many jokes. I'm sorry.
Oh, hey, you're good. You're good. As long as Jared's getting his dinner, that's what matters.
He sure is.
We have it covered.
Yeah.
Yeah, alrighty. Well, we don't have a lot of good material this week, you know, so, but anyway. All right, anything else, Zach or Susan? Or any, or anything for Zach or Susan?
I just want to know if you're actually in a suite.
No, no, I'm just in the Fairfield. I don't like getting the big suites. I hate those. I had one of those a couple of weeks ago, and it's like this three-bedroom, and in Grand Rapids, it was stupid. Like, I like it to feel a little bit more homing, so.
Don't you like the couch?
No, no, I'm rarely even in my hotel, so like, I'm really weird. Like, I always just like the two-bedroom, like the two queen bed suites. I throw everything on one bed and sleep on the other and, so, anyway, but I don't know. Anyway, good. Bill's on, nice, nice background there, and it's lovely, so.
Okay, how about we take a three-minute break while I get water?
Sounds amazing.
Cool.
Okay, all right, it's 6:30. We have Zach. It doesn't look like we have everybody on. Okay, are you ready Zach? Okay, welcome everyone to our November 5th, 2020 Murray City Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting. I am the Vice Chairman, Scott Woodbury, and I'll be chairing the meeting tonight. I do have a statement to read really quickly. As the Vice Chair of the Murray City Planning Commission, I, Scott Woodbury, have determined that due to infectious disease COVID-19 novel coronavirus, holding an in-person meeting with an anchor location presents a substantial risk to the health and safety of those in attendance. Under these circumstances, Utah Code 52-4-2074 allows for electronic meetings to be held without an anchor location so long as the public has an opportunity to view the meeting and submit public comments. We are holding tonight's Planning Commission meeting via video conference, and the meeting is being live streamed at www.murraycitylive.com. If you have a public comment to submit to the Planning Commission, please do so via email at planningcommission@murray.utah.gov. All right, with us here from the Planning Commission, we have myself, Scott Woodbury, we have the Chair, Phil Markham, we have Travis Nay, Lisa Milkovich, Ned Hacker, Maren Patterson, Sue and Sue Wilson. Then from the staff, we have Zach Smallwood, Susan Nixon, and Bryant Farnsworth. Today, we do have five items on the agenda. The first few are just a few business items. Then we'll have a, we have a couple of conditional use permits. So with that, we will start with Item Number One, which is the Approval of Minutes from the October 15th, 2020 Planning Meeting. Has everyone had a chance to review those?
Yes.
Yes.
Good. Were there any changes other than the grammatical ones that we talked about in the pre-meeting?
No.
Okay, they look good again, just a couple of little changes there that are, don't change any meaning, just some grammar. So I'll entertain a motion. I guess, yeah, we need a motion, so.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that the Planning Commission approve the meeting minutes from the Planning Commission meeting held October 15th, 2020, with the few corrections we talked about in the pre-meeting.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. So I have a motion from Mr. Hacker to approve the 2020 Planning and Zoning Meeting with a second by Chairman Markham. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, thank you. All right, there are no, any conflicts of interest from today's items?
No.
No.
No? Okay, thank you. And there are no findings of facts for this meeting. So we will jump right into Item Number Four, which is the Big Dog Stitch and Screen, a conditional use permit for commercial embroidery and screen printing. And Mr. Smallwood will be, will be doing this. Is the applicant on? He is on?
Yeah, both applicants are on for this meeting.
Perfect, thank you, Mr. Smallwood. All right, I'll turn it over to you then. Go ahead.
So you'll have to be patient with me while I do, ah, perfect. All right, can you see the Planning Commission thing?
Yes.
Yes.
Perfect, thank you very much. Okay, so like you said, this is Item Number Four, Big Dog Stitch and Screen. It's a conditional use permit for embroidery and screen printing at the property addressed 312 West Vine Street. Located here, you'll see it's this furthest east building or unit within this building. The zoning is MU, which is mixed-use, that does allow for industrial-type uses to be, to operate. to be, uh, to operate subject to a conditional use permit. And as long as it's less than 12,000 square feet. This is a 3,425 square foot built, uh, unit. So it does meet that 12,000 square foot, uh, less than 12,000 square foot minimum. So it's pretty straightforward. There is, uh, here highlighted in yellow is a floor plan provided by the applicant. As well as, uh, some additional, uh, parking stalls, things like that. Um, some photos of the site. Uh, as you can see up here, the purely linens is where they will be taking the spot of. There's an overhead, uh, door as long as, as well as a man's door. Um, you can see this was one of the items that need to be, be, be brought up. Holy moly. Um, was that, uh, staff's opinion is that we uh, forego the landscaping and, you know, public improvements, uh, installation on this, uh, site. Uh, because we do anticipate it to redevelop, uh, soon. Uh, I can't give a specific timeline, but fairly soon. Uh, across the street here, you would see, uh, Murray School District, which is, has the street improvements. Staff believes that is adequate and provides a good safe walking environment for uh, the applicant, or not the applicant, I'm sorry, for pedestrians walking along Vine Street. So there is some sort of protection there. And, uh, a navigable route. So, uh, let's see, just double check. Um, they operate as an embroidery business. They, they, uh, put logos on sports gear, things like that for the most part. They have three employees. The parking requirements are, uh, five parking. It's based on, uh, the warehousing, which is one per 750 square feet. And, um, then one for every 250 square feet of office. That totaled into five parking spaces, uh, required. They do have two out in front and a total of six around the side and rear of the property, which gives them a total of eight. Um, which is adequate. Um, the last thing I wanted to cover is a trash enclosure. Currently there is not a dumpster enclosure for, um, for this unit. However, if, if they do not want, wish to install one, which would be required as part of any, um, improvements. Um, they can house that within the walls of the unit. So with that, uh, staff is recommending, uh, approval for this project, subject to the five conditions that are laid out in the staff report. Are there any questions for staff at this point?
Any questions from the commission from Mr. Smallwood? I, I had one question. Um, so you're saying there's no dumpsters on the site currently?
That's my understanding, yes.
So we would put a dumpster in for, in, just inside that roll-up door for this one site. Do the other, the other two need a dumpster?
Dumpster, yes.
If, if they want one, so certainly they don't have to have one. Any other questions for Mr. Smallwood?
I apologize. I might, I might have missed. I thought when I read it, it said that they can have, and they don't have an enclosure currently and they can choose if they need a dumpster, place it inside or create an enclosure. Is that, that's still?
Correct.
Yes, the case.
Thank you.
No problem.
Any other questions for Zach? Okay. All right. If, if the applicant is here, um, let's have the applicant. And just big dog stitch applicant, what is your name? Name and record and address for the record. Name and address for the record.
Marnie Sanchez.
Marnie Sanchez. Welcome, Marnie. And what's your address?
My home or the business?
Either one.
The business is 312 West Vine Street, Murray, Utah, 84107.
Okay. All right. And have you had a, anything you'd like the commission to know about your business?
Okay, two things. So on that dumpster, so the issues that you are requiring for these recommendations and conditions, of course, there's something I'm going to have to call the landlord on because that's out of my control. But the, there are two dumpsters. The, they used to be in the front, uh, near this, the front area, near that, that fence where that bus stop is, where that car like a car body shop. We moved it to the back of the building to be out of sight of anything. And we do have a lock on it and the dry cleaner has one too back there and we are side by side with each other. And the dumpster guy comes around that back access area and dumps right there. They said it was easier, so we pushed him back there. I'm not sure what you would want for an enclosure because we're up against a chain link fence and the dumpster, I'd have to get approval from the dumpster people if they're going to be able to access it with their truck to get in there. So I mean, those are kind of some conditions that might not be, that'll be out of my control because of the tenant, because of the landlord and the dumpster people. There's no way we're going to put a dumpster inside our building when we have, you know, cleaning, we have to have products clean. I can't have school gear dropped off and have a dumpster inside my unit.
Well, that, that makes, that makes sense. We'll let staff address that, um, after. Uh, any other things you'd like us to know about your business or any questions for, for staff?
And then another thing, I'm just trying to, so I'm not held up. That little strip she's got right there. I, I know she, up against the, the building, she, we've got like a rock building wall and she's put plants in there. That little strip that's right there in front, there's no sprinkler access. So I know if you're going to require her to do landscaping, the only thing she's probably going to be able to do to keep alive is put some sort of like rock or mulch or something. So that's just a FYI.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. And have you had a chance to look at all five conditions?
Yes, I think the only two that would, would hold us up would be the dumpster enclosure and if you're requiring landscaping.
Okay. Okay. And so the, I'll let, um, staff address the, the dumpster. Um, but you'll, you'll be able to comply with those, with the, with, with all of those. And then we can talk with the, about the dumpster?
Yes, absolutely. We can comply with all those.
Okay. Um, Zach, would you like to address the, the dumpster?
Sure.
Just, just, just so the applicant can understand what the city's stance is on that?
Yeah. So typically we, what we do require, and it's required by law is that, uh, by city law, is that any dumpsters have to be enclosed, um, with a, uh, solid fence with gate so that those can be accessed. Um, that would most likely have to come from the, the property owner. Um, they would have to install that. Um, however, that's worked out, uh, that would have to be addressed. Um, and then depending on however, as long as that's addressed and can be met during the business licensing side of, of things, showing that your, your conditions have been met, um, that's that's how that's resolved. So either, uh, that gets instituted or we wouldn't uh, approve a business license at the location.
Well, why wouldn't that been instituted before? Because Purely Linen was there, their dumpster was clear in front. The dry cleaning place has one in the back. So there's two dumpsters there. Why is it all of a sudden issue now that I'm applying for a permit?
Because what I, I would anticipate, um, I can't speak to exactly specifics here, but from what I understand, um, it's because you're going through a conditional use permit process. Um, the dry cleaner may be a permitted use. I don't know. I haven't done any of that research. Um, they may be a permit. Any zoning approvals, um, to, to verify that. So.
Mr. Smallwood, they still would have been required to have an enclosure for the dumpster. They just didn't get caught not having it correctly.
That is correct. Yes.
Also, if it's highly likely, question Mr. Smallwood, hi- highly likely that any other applicant coming to this site would have the Zach saying requirement. So it's, it's highly likely that the owner would be interested in needing the requirement?
100% correct, Ms. Milkevich.
And, and Zach, I guess now, um, is this something that, that we can go out and, and as part of this process? When, if you went out to, to look at her enclosure and work with her and notice the others were out of compliance, um, is that something then that we would work with the, the landlord, um, to rectify that? So it, so it not, I mean, cause if he's going to have to do an enclosure for her, he might as well do it for, for all of them. But is that?
That's correct, Mr. Woodbury.
Okay. So, so yeah, yes, Mrs. Sanchez, we, we understand that this is the landlord's responsibility and the purpose behind the commission, uh, the conditions is just so you understand what city code and city law requires. And so, um, you know, what we encourage people to do is, is, is work with the landlord and then also with the city, um, to make sure that there is compliance, both with your application. And then if there are any other existing um, buildings there that are not in compliance, then the city can address, can address those. Um, any other questions for, for the applicant? Any questions for the applicant from the commission?
Um, okay, just one more. I'm just, when you were bringing up that, the UTA is doing some sort of possible buyout on that area, that corner to, for that bus stop, that's kind of, it's not in front of our property. It's right next door where that car repair shop is. Are they planning on coming in and I'm just looking long-term. Am I setting myself up to be here long-term? And then in a year, UTA or whoever comes in and buys a property and then I have to relocate when I've set up, uh, an established business? That's what my concern is right now, looking forward.
Um, I can't speak to that really anymore. Um, it's still in the planning phases, um, for that. So I, I, it's still uh, uh, at least a year or two away, uh, before they even start to discuss, um, right-of-way acquisition. Um, and I don't believe they would take the entire property. It would just be a portion so that they could, um, and I don't believe they're going to quote unquote, take it either. Um, it, it typically, that's not how things are, are, are done. They usually work with the property owner to purchase part of that from them, um, to.
Well, I'm on that end unit. So if they were going to take property, that would be the part that they would probably want.
And, but I don't anticipate them taking that much property. Um, they, it would be right-of-way. So it would be probably no wider than what the planting strip area probably is right now. It's not, it's not going to be a big chunk.
Hey.
But again, this is within the planning phases still, and it's still down the road.
Well, and Zach, I, I think it's important for the applicant to understand why, um, Mr. Hall, as he was working on this, recommended, um, the landscaping aspect of it because that is unique. Um, so maybe if you can help the applicant understand why he did that and what would normally be required. I mean, he did, he did address it a little bit, but I think it's important to understand about the, you know, why, why that was done.
Yeah. And that's one of the things is that, that, uh, Jared, when writing up the staff report had, had had, had stated that we don't anticipate, um, or we do anticipate for this to redevelop and through part of that right-of-way acquisition, that they would install, um, sidewalk, curbs and gutters, things like that during that process. And so that's why, for, for the applicant, um, we kind of made an exception uh, as to not install, uh, new sidewalk, new curb, new gutter, um, a- a- and that level of, of detail, uh, because we do anticipate this BRT line to come in and we also anticipate, uh, potential redevelopment in some of those parcels.
And Zach, just for clarification for those who are listening, um, the, the regulations, ordinances, laws typically would require that with this application. So that would be a standard request, right?
That would be a standard request. Yeah.
And that, that's being curb, gutter, sidewalk, landscaping, right?
Yep, correct.
So is it up to me to contact the landlord and tell her that I'm, we're required, or she's required to do an enclosure around the dumpsters? Curb?
Uh, but no, uh, not unless the planning commission has, decides. Because right now all you're being held to are the, the five conditions that are listed in this.
Okay. So just the dumpster enclosure is really what she's got. I gotta, I need to contact her and let her know I need that done?
It, that's correct.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, as long, yeah.
But, but it's also important to, to help her understand, um, you know, that the landscaping would have normally been required and certainly there can be discussion here and there may be something. Um, so it, it really is, I mean, it sounds like you're looking to have a long-term business there, which is, is, is great. Um, we don't know what the future holds of the whole, you know, as, as far as the whole redevelopment potential. Um, but it is something that is important for the landlord to understand, you know, what was done. So, um, i- i- if there's no more questions for the applicant, then we, we certainly can, we're, we're going to open it up for, for public. Any other questions for the applicant at this point? Okay. Well, we'll go ahead and we'll open this up for the public. Again, a reminder, you can send email if you have any thoughts or, um, comments for planningcommission@murray.utah.gov. Um, have we received any, Susan?
Uh, no. Um, I might make a comment that a copy of the staff report with the conditions outline was mailed to the property owner. So they should be aware of it, assuming that they read them. So.
Thank you, Susan. So, um, Mrs. Sanchez, as you reference, um, as you ta- contact the landlord, um, they, they should have these conditions and, and, and so it shouldn't be a surprise for them, what is being asked and required by the city as part of this additional use permit.
Okay, thank you.
Also, uh, Mr. Woodbury, uh, I, I told Phil Markham this about, about this earlier, and I think you may have missed the last meeting, um, where I don't remember. Um, but we actually are, have updated kind of uh, behind the scenes how we're doing public comments as well. So we do accept them via email. Um, but it, we are allowing people to speak if they have registered. Um, and I do want to make mention that we have not had anybody, uh, besides the applicants register for this meeting. So.
Okay. Thank you for that. I do remember seeing that in my email, but yes, I did the last meeting.
That's okay.
Thank you for correcting my ways.
That's all right.
Oh, thank. It's right. I forgot your name. So it's, it's all good.
We're even.
Yeah, we're even. All right. Well, i- if there is no, um, public comment, then we will close the public comment portion of this meeting and we'll bring it back up to the commission for any discussion or, um, or a motion if anyone sees fit.
I would think, um, as we kind of talked about in the pre-meeting, uh, I understand the decision to not require any of the public improvements, um, with the potential of the expansion of the BRT line, but uh, it does feel a little arbitrary to me that we often use conditional uses as a way to hold property owners accountable to meet the city ordinances and the city standards. And, uh, especially with landscaping, that's something that we very commonly do. And so I would like to see some kind of landscaping requirement, maybe not in the park strip, but, um, on the property as, as we do with almost all of the other applications.
Thank you, Mrs. Patterson. Any other comments?
Well, and to, along with that discussion, I'd like to ask Mr. Smallwood, what would the requirements be for that area? Again, idea of how large of an ask we're asking here.
That is a great question that I don't really have the answer to. Um, I would, I have not studied the site in depth. Um, if I had just right off the bat, um, this is a fairly large site. Uh, if, can you guys see my, my mouse?
Uh huh.
Okay. If that site encompasses this entire area. And I believe in them, in our landscaping standards, we say that, um, so there would probably have to be some landscaping improvements. Pretty significant throughout the entire site. Um, I believe 75 feet has to be landscape material. I know um, from a previous, uh, application that we approved a cell tower over here that never fully got built. So, and I know that there's some access easements along here. So it, it's long story short, I, I can't answer 100% um.
Oh, I was just gonna say, I could interject. Um, situations like this in the past, we've done where it's a percentage of what is being improved or the use that's going in there. So if this uses, say, a third of the space they're taking, we try to keep it proportional to the improvements, required improvements. So it might be a proportion of equal to that 30%. I'm just throwing out a percentage. Um, we have done things like that in the past, but, uh, so it's not, they don't have to bring the entire property up because of one space. But again, that's probably up to the commission, what they feel is appropriate, I guess.
Susan, I appreciate that input because like Mary, I'd like us to be as consistent as we can between applicants because that's reasonable. Doesn't, doesn't, uh, doesn't appear that we have favoritism if we're trying to be consistent between applicants. Um, but I also wanna be respectful of the fact that I don't wanna request that applicant put a ton of money into something that we know will probably change relatively soon. So, and that's.
Yeah, I totally agree with that. I don't think that it's, um. This site obviously has not been up to the standards for a long time. So I don't think that necessarily one application requires all of the standards. But I would like to, I mean, if there was a way that we could modify, we're already making an exception. And I, I see that it's unreasonable to maybe ask them to get fully into compliance. But maybe have some way to help improve the site until it gets redeveloped, I think would be positive.
Yeah, and I, I don't disagree with Susan's, uh, um. Analysis there. I think that, that would be adequate, um, from, from, from my side anyway. I think that, I think that's a good, good way to call for it. And you could, you could say it in such a way that, you know, that the applicant should work with staff to develop. A, a landscaping plan that meets, you know. A, a rough proportionality type thing that, you know, a proportion of, of the landscaping, um.
Yeah, whether that be, um, the frontage landscaping, which is really the most visible part. Again, I'm throwing out a, an option.
Yeah, I kind of feel like this is our opportunity to kind of make this site look a little better. Because we don't know an exact timeline of when improvements or changes might be. So I think we kind of need to stick with our standards and say, well, we need a landscaping plan. Um, on the books, because it just, you're not even keeping up the park strip. And whether it has water to it or not, you can still make it look good. You know, you can zerescape it. You can do things that don't require water and, and make it look good. Right now, it just is dirt.
If, if the, if we make reasonable requests, and that, that's my next concern, how do we make an objective request? So I, I kind of like what Zach suggested, ask applicants to work with the city.
Yes. I agree.
Phil and Travis, what are your thoughts?
I, you know, I, I hate ambiguity. Um, I think that, uh, you know, I, I was prepared to make a motion to, uh. Approve as, as written, with the conditions as written. I think that, um, we're placing a lot of pressure once again on staff. To, uh, to make decisions that, you know, could mean that this person could operate here or not operate here. And I think that staff needs some, some guidelines. And I don't think that we're qualified to say what kind of landscaping should go in there, you know? Uh, it, it's, to me, it's kind of cut and dry. Either, either we make an exception in this case because it's a unique circumstance, or we hold them to the full measure of the ordinance.
But in forsaken discussion, you know, your, your points are good points. But to avoid ambiguity, either, I feel either we should, I feel like it, it's a strong point that we should, um, take advantage of the opportunities and improve the, enhance the. Uh, appearance of the, of the.
It's gonna take, it's gonna take a tremendous amount of money and work to make that property look real good.
Your argument though is making me lean toward tableing it so we can have information to know what would be reasonable and what's not for landscaping. So that we're not putting the pressure on the city to do it.
I don't know. I, you know, perhaps we can say, um, present some type of landscaping plan that satisfies staff. I, I don't know. I don't know. That's just, well, it's very ambiguous and I, I don't like that type of stuff.
Real quick, the applicant has raised their hand. Um, does the commission? Okay?
Sure. Sure.
Okay. Sorry, I was just making, I think that's how I'm gonna kind of work this.
No, that's fine. That's fine. Go ahead.
Okay.
Okay, this is Marty, I'm back on. The, um, landlord texted me, she must be listening in on too. She said the park strip does have water to it. She tried to put dry landscape, but the city refused. So this must have been an issue before and maybe it needs to be looked back upon. So that's probably why she hasn't done anything to it. But across the whole front of the building, the entire front, there's a, but you can't see it with these pictures. She's, there's a box raised planter bed across the entire front with like, um, flowering. Oh, she's added that. It's not on, it's not in that picture. If you come to look at it now, there's a flower bed, a whole box raised flower bed. And there's like, um, chips, mulch and, uh, tall grass ornamental plants against the whole front of the building.
Yeah, I think in comparison though, you know, that the Murray City School District landscaping across the street would be. Kind of comparable to what the ordinance and the standard is. So compared to a box in front of the building and the landscaping that's been put in across the street. You know, that's just kind of a comparison of what would typically be required. Is that wrong, Zach?
No, not at all. That, that's 100% correct.
And, and that's my point. I mean, we either have to do it right or, or we recognize that this is a unique situation. And we, uh, we issue some type of a pass on this. So it's, it's, in my mind, it's gotta be one of the two.
But, uh, in your discussion to avoid ambiguity, I feel like the public would see it not being part of the discussion, just driving by every day. There's already ambiguity there. There's nothing and a lot. I feel like we're trying to be, we need to be definitive in what we ask for, but we're trying to say we have to ask for something that's our standards. I, I don't know, I still.
Mr. Nay, Mr. Nay had a, had a comment. Go ahead, Travis.
Sure, so this is the first project that I can think of where we have explicitly not required landscape improvements. And, and there may have been one or two in there that I just don't recall, but this is the first time I've recalled it kind of. And this is the first time that I would remain supportive of not requiring the landscaping. I think this general area in the city is, is primed for change. Uh, when is that change gonna come? I don't know. But I think that there's a number of properties in here that are, are going to be acquired. You have the Galleria just on the other side of I-15, the property is currently for sale. I think there's a lot of change coming here. This is the one time where I'm okay with not adding anything to the landscape. That's me personally, but.
No, thank you, thank you, Mr. Nay. Any other, any other comments on, on the discussion? Um, I mean, I, I, I'm, I'm more in, in line with Phil. Um, I, I feel like so often on the, on the commission, we try to make decisions on what the ordinances are today. And try to avoid any sort of what-ifs and what may happen. And none of us know what's gonna happen. Yes, we may think, we may hear, we may say, oh, could be redeveloped. It is prime. I mean, I agree with Mr. Nay, certainly that there's a lot of targets for redevelopment here. But we're living in, but we can't, we can't make a decision in a what-if world. So I, I, I tend to side with Mr. Markham on this is, you know, we either make the exception or we hold them to the standard that, that the city has out, has, has laid out. Um, so. Any other thoughts?
Mr. Woodbury, just for clarification, so you're thinking that to redevelop the whole properties? The appropriate thing to do is saying all the whole property or, or not? Is, is that the option of just a portion of the property that's equivalent to the portion of the property that they're applying for? Is that part of your discussion or you're thinking that's not?
I, I, I was just expressing my opinion that I, I more along the lines of Mr. Markham. I, I, I think it's, it's difficult to, um. I, I mean, th- this property has not been kept up according to, to city standards and, and, and what it should be. I mean, that's evidenced by even the dumpsters that were referenced by the applicant. Um, and, and it's not sort of, it's not anything trying to be punitive or saying, hey, this is the past. But we don't know how long this property is gonna be there. It sounds like that the applicant wants to have a, a long-term established business and, and build a clientele based on that location. So I, I, I guess what I'm, I'm saying, Ms. Milkovich, is, is I, I, I don't, I don't see a reason for the, um, for the exception. And, and I, and I, and I feel like that, that it, you know, certainly I'm always comfortable with working with staff because I trust the staff. But I, 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 I just don't really see making an. So, but that, that, that's mine, so.
Is Murray City gonna put curb and a sidewalk in that, in there too, through that strip?
Zach, if you could address, um, how curb and gutter and how that's done in, in, under the, under the, the ordinance and what the ordinance says.
So the ordinance states that if there are improvements, um, greater to 50, I, I believe it's 50%. Of the, uh, assessed value of the property, then those improvements would be required. That's where it would trip in.
To 50% of the value of the total property or the unit?
The entire property, I believe. That's, that's an engineering standard.
Yeah, so you've got three units there and obviously that's not our expertise to say the level of improvements, but.
Right, so we wouldn't require, so if, if, if the commission decides to move forward with requiring landscaping. Um, that, we couldn't require, um, really the, the sidewalk curb and gutter. There because it's not going to kind of hit that threshold. Otherwise, uh, engineering probably would have commented and stated that they wanted those improvements put in. But landscaping, that's a hundred percent different story.
Right, so to answer the applicant's question, the, the side, the, the curb and gutter and the sidewalk would not be required to be installed at this point.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, and if, if, if and when the BRT or the Bus Rapid Transit line comes through. They would probably improve a portion of that, probably not the entire frontage, but a portion of that.
So it's just that front strip that you, uh, are wanting landscape?
It would be, um. And, and this, this is entirely, it, it typically, it's this entire front, so it would be this portion and then this portion.
But, but ultimately at this point, you know, Ms. Sanchez, you know, that's why we're having the discussion. Um, is obviously the city, that Mr. Hall recommended an exception. And, and you can hear the discussion, um, of, of feelings on that. So, so there's nothing been made recommended. There's not anything part of the, part of the staff at, at this point. One of the members, just from a procedural standpoint, Ms. Sanchez, what would have to happen is. A member of the planning commission would have to make a motion or would have to add a condition and then make a motion on that, and then it would be voted for. So, you know, as of right now, nothing has been, has been instituted, so that's what the purpose of the discussion is. So, um, but it was helpful for Mr. Smallwood to at least explain what the typical would be, so.
Okay, so for right now, the only things I have to worry about are the number five staff recommendation and conditions?
Yeah, uh, as, as of right now, because nothing has been, and been voted on. And so again, if you wanna just, um, listen to the, the discussion and certainly if you have any other questions, certainly raise your hand for Mr. Smallwood. Um, but we'll continue with the, with the commission discussion and so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Um, so any, any other thoughts or, um, questions, comments, motions?
Mr. Chairman, I, I would like to, uh, to put a, a motion out there just to see if, uh, there is a second or if there is, uh, support. Um, I would like.
Can I interrupt you very quickly?
Yeah, Mr. Smallwood.
Did we close the public hearing?
Yes.
Yes, you did.
Okay, I'm sorry. I'm out of it, so I apologize.
It's, it's all right. No, we, we, we closed, we did, we did close it, so. Okay, Mr. Markham.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a recommendation that the planning commission approve a conditional use permit. To allow the operation of a commercial embroidery and screen printing business on the property located at 312 West Vine Street. Subject to conditions one through five as outlined in the presentation tonight.
I'll second that motion.
I'll. Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Markham. Um, that the planning commission approve a conditional use permit to allow the operation of a commercial embroidery and screen printing business. On the property located at 312 West Vine Street, subject to condition one through five and a second by Mr. Nay. So we will take a vote on this. Mr. Smallwood or Susan?
Yeah, uh, I can do it. Uh, Ms., Commissioner Markham?
Yes.
Commissioner Nay?
Yes.
Commissioner Hacker?
Yes.
Commissioner Milkovich?
I wish you'd called someone else first because.
I went to med before you.
I know.
You were next in line.
So.
I like some landscaping there.
I can skip you for now.
Okay.
Well, just as Zach, it, it's okay if I can jump in real quick, just so there's a reminder to the applicant and also to the commissioners that are still. But if, if, if the motion doesn't pass, then, then another, another motion would have to be made and they could add conditions or change it. Um, that's what we're, we are voting right now on what that motion was. So, um, we either, you either say yay or, or nay, but we are voting on what the motion was made by Mr. Markham.
And point of order, Mr. Chair, if this motion's voted down, we can't vote on the same motion again?
No, you, you can make another motion, right, Zach?
Could you make the same motion again?
From a procedural standpoint, that there.
I think, I think a different motion.
It, it, yeah, it'd have to be a different motive. If, if the motion fails, then there could, there could be another motion made, but we can't vote on this motion a- again. Um, someone else would have to come out and say, I would like to add this or change this, because then it's a different motion. But.
Correct.
So, so right, right now, we have three yeses and, and we're on, Mrs. Wilson, is that who we're on, Susan or Zach?
Yes.
Okay.
I thought you were on Lisa.
Or Lisa, you guys can arm wrestle later.
I, I, I went to, I went to Ms. Wilson. I'm giving Lisa a moment.
Oh, okay, then, um, I am gonna say yes.
Okay, um, Ms. Patterson?
I think it's arbitrary and I hope it gets redeveloped soon, but I'll say yes.
And Ms. Milkovich?
So I, I wanna say too, I, I do feel like outwardly looking, it seems, it will seem and look arbitrary to the public. And that's my concern, but I want, I appreciate this group and I appreciate the discussion and I will support you guys, so I'll say yes.
Okay. Oh, sorry, and Mr. Woodbury?
I, I, I will, I will say yes. Um, I, I do echo, um, echo the thoughts that I, I, I don't like the arbitrariness of it. But I will support the motion and I trust the city. And I appreciate the applicant, um, which by Mrs. Sanchez, uh, it, it has passed. So please work with, uh, with the, with the landlord to make sure that you get these things, um, taken care of. Um, and best of luck when, when your business moving forward. So, okay, alrighty. Onto item number five, which is the Brooke and Kathy Thomas accessory dwelling unit. And Mr. Smallwood, it is your show again.
Great, thank you so much again, Chairman Woodbury. Um, this, like you said, uh, is item number five, Brooke and Kathy Thomas. Uh, requesting a conditional use permit for an accessory dwelling unit at 5112 South Honey Clover Court. Uh, Honey Clover Court is in the, uh, kind of north wa- northwest of the city, kind of. Um, right here off Germania, um, and I can't remember the name of the school and I apologize.
Horizon.
Yes, hey, I had it. Took me a second, but I got it. Uh, Horizon Elementary, um, is just south and east of the property. Um, it is in an R18 zone. Uh, all our single-family zones do allow for an accessory dwelling unit. Subject to a conditional use permit application. So as you can see here, this is the site plan for the property. Uh, this is a 0.25 acre site with a 3,500 square foot dwelling on the property. And they are proposing a 950 square foot accessory dwelling unit. That 950 square feet is less than the thousand that we allow and equates to about 27% of the main dwelling. Uh, they do have, uh, enough parking. They have a two-car garage here. And then they do have this area as well designated for parking, um, on the side. They will be required to obtain a building permit. Right now, this is, they are just going through this process. To get the accessory dwelling unit approved beforehand, before they go through that process. Um, and then also, just as an aside, we do not allow, uh, short-term rentals in any single-family zone in the city. Um, such as Airbnb, VRBO, anything like that. Um, so that will not be allowed here and is specifically called out as a condition. Uh, as you can see here, so, um, I kind of modified this just a tiny bit. Uh, this is the floor plan, the proposed floor plan. Originally, there was a request to have, um, and, and it wouldn't have been a request for the planning commission. Let me caveat that. Um, the entrance was proposed to be on, um, the corner side lot area, which we would not allow for accessory dwelling units. And then also it was going to encroach within, uh, the side yard setback. So, um, after discussions with Mr. Thomas, uh, we had decided that, um, it would be best to eliminate this. The code, uh, the accessory dwelling unit code does not specifically state that there must be an exterior entrance to the accessory dwelling unit. So this, the floor plan would still remain the same. And if they decide that they would like to put an exterior, exterior entrance in the rear of the property, let's say, um, they would just have to obtain a building permit and that's allowed, um, by anybody in the single family residential zone. Um, so they are proposing two bedrooms here, uh, one here. There's a little landing right here. So there's a, an existing bedroom here, an existing bedroom here. Uh, this is a storage area that, uh, is not part of the ADU. Uh, they state that even if it was, it is still within that 950 square feet. Excuse me. A couple of photos of the site. This is just the front of the property and this is kind of the parking area of the site. And that's really I, all I had for the pictures. I apologize. Um, so we are recommending the approval of the construction and/or operation of the conditional use permit allowing the accessory dwelling unit at the address, uh, property address 5112 South Honey Clover Court, subject to, uh, the typical 13 conditions. Any questions or comments for me at this point?
Wonderful job, Mr. Smallwood. Appreciate that. Any questions for Mr. Smallwood regarding this applicant, application? No? Okay. All right. Is the applicant here? Yep, there is. Mr. Thomas. Okay. All right, Mr. Thomas, how are you today?
I'm gonna see, I, let me.
You gotta let him speak.
Yes.
Good. Mr. Tom. Welcome to our meeting. How are you this day? Mr. Thomas? All right.
He is unmuted. So, uh, try to speak, Mr. Thomas.
Or send a chat. Okay?
Yeah, let me, uh.
Right. This, this is 2020 for us, Zach, cause that works. It wouldn't be a virtual meeting without a little bit of a. Hey, hi. Oh, that was for me. Said I.
I think he called in from his cell phone. So I'm trying to see if I can get it to.
There he goes. It looks like it's in there. Is it the 801-651-1785?
I think so. I'm just trying to see if I can, yes, he said that is him.
Can you unmute that, that one?
That's the thing is that it's not letting me force an unmute. Um, I can just ask him to unmute. Which is dumb.
Well, I mean.
Well, what, um, so what we can do, if you would, if you would be amenable, um, I do have him in chat, so I can communicate with him.
Yeah. We, we just need to ask him what he would like to say about the application and if he can abide, if he has read and can abide by the 13 conditions. If there's anything we need to know about the, the prob, about the application.
All right. And if you want to respond in chat, Mr. Thomas, we can, we can do it that way and then I can just relay it.
I mean, I mean, we can see the chat.
Oh, I guess you can, huh?
Yeah. We have a question about separate heating.
Okay. Um, so I will just go through it real quick. So separate heating, um, is required. Typically that's through baseboards, um, and that would be worked out during the building permit process. You would work with our building official, Dawn, um, but he would be able to work with you on that.
Okay. Any other questions, Mr. Thomas? Is it okay? Are you able to comply with the 13 conditions? Okay. Electric panel at the basement, is that okay?
That is okay, um, as, as long as, um, both, both parties, so as long as the, uh, the renter of the accessory dwelling unit and, and the homeowner have access to it, that's the most important thing. And that's what they're looking for there.
Okay. Good. Any other questions, Mr. Thomas? Yes, that should work. Thank you. Okay. All right. Are you able to abide with all 13? Yes, we can comply with conditions. Okay. All right. Are there any questions from the commission for Mr. Thomas? No? Okay. Mr. Thomas, hold on. We're gonna open up for public comment. And so at this point, we'll open it up for public comment. So if you have registered and would like to speak to a comment, um, certainly Mr. Smallwood will let you in or you can send a, an email as well. So have we had anybody register, Susan or Zach? To comment on this?
No.
No hands raising, no registering? Okay. Well, we'll wait, we'll wait a second. We had some, uh, presenters yesterday, while we're waiting for this, we had some presenters yesterday and for business here and one of them was slow to get on and having technical problems. So I had to, you know, warm up the group and so I said, hey, we can do some karaoke. And one of the, one of the dispatchers said, sure, I'll get up and do karaoke. And everyone said, no, no, no. So anyway, so if, if anyone, and, and I asked her what she was gonna sing and she was gonna do Golden Girls, "Thank You For Being A Friend." So I really was disappointed. We didn't have her come up. But anyway, so if anyone, Maren, do you wanna do karaoke or Sue? Lisa? Lisa's saying no. Okay.
Uh, I can guarantee you Scott, you do not want me to do karaoke.
Well, fortunately.
Or Phil or Ned, why don't they do karaoke?
Cause "Thank You For Being A Friend," travel down the road and back again.
Yeah, I, that was awesome. Travis, that was the highlight of the meeting. So, all right. Well, I think that, um, we don't have any public comment, especially after Travis singing. So, well, there may be public comment, but it's not about this application anymore. So. Um, so we'll go ahead and close the public comment portion of this and bring it back to the commission. Are there any comments or questions or if Travis would like to sing a motion, that would be great.
I'll be happy to make a motion, but I'm not gonna sing a motion.
All right. Fair enough.
I, I, I would make a motion that we approve a conditional use permit to allow the construction and/or operation of accessory dwelling unit at the property address 5112 South Honey Court, or Honey Clover Court, subject to the 13 conditions as written.
I'll second.
I have a motion.
Go ahead, Sue. Sue has it.
We gotta pursue.
Sorry, Phil.
No, you're good. Um, I got a motion by Mr. Nay to approve a conditional use permit for, uh, the construction and/or operation of an accessory dwelling unit at the property address 5112 South Honey Clover Court, subject to conditions one through 13. And I have a second by Commissioner Wilson. All right. Zach or Susan?
Uh, Commissioner Nay?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilson?
Yes.
Commissioner Markham?
Yes.
Commissioner Hacker?
Yes.
Commissioner Patterson?
Yes.
Commissioner Milkovich?
Yes.
Commissioner Woodbury?
Yes. All right, Thomas's, it passes. Thank you for, um, complying with the, uh, with the ordinances. We appreciate it. If you have any questions, work with the staff as you go through the process. Um, and if you need Travis to come over for some karaoke, he would be happy to do that in, in your accessory dwelling karaoke.
Anytime.
So, um, thank you so much, Thomas's. Have a wonderful evening. Um, Zach or Susan, is there anything that, that needs to come before us at this time? Oh, Travis, are you available Friday?
Yes, I am.
That's great.
That's awesome. Thank you, Mr. Thomas. So anyway, uh, they're converting their karaoke into an accessory dwelling unit. So apparently they already set up for it. But all right, Zach or Susan, anything for the commission?
Um, not really. We have, um, we have a pretty heavy, uh, meeting on the 19th, just to be aware. Um, I believe there are six, seven items, I think. Um, it's a big one. Um, oh, there you go. Um, and, uh, with the design guidelines in there and a couple other stuff. So it's a big meeting. So if you are not going to be available, please let us know ahead of time. Um, so we can try and make the appropriate accommodations. Oh.
Yes, Ned?
So I have an announcement for the planning commission. Um, the West Side's Front Regional Council has been holding, uh, regional workshops with multiple cities. Susan and Zach probably know about this already, but, um, the, the workshop for the southeast portion of Salt Lake County, which includes Holiday and Murray and then south to Draper, uh, is on the evening or afternoon, excuse me, of the 23rd of November from four to six o'clock. So if you haven't been invited yet, you probably will be in the near future. Um, and it's basically, uh, um, an update from the regional council to the, the city staff and elected officials in the cities about the visioning process, our long-range planning process. And, um, there's some opportunities to, to provide input from the, the city to the, to the regional council. So, um, if you have nothing to do on Monday afternoon, 23, uh, November, there's another opportunity for you to do a Zoom meeting.
Awesome. Thank you, Mr. Hacker. Anything else? Travis is doing karaoke this weekend, so.
And, uh, just for, for Maren's benefit, uh, Maren, the reason I didn't, uh, offer to do karaoke is they don't allow me to sing in church. So, um, that's not a good idea.
This is a safe space, Phil. You can sing here.
That's awesome. It, it is, it is a safe space. All right. Well, if there's nothing else, um, I will, uh, entertain a motion and then I will bid you adieu from Milwaukee. So, um, assuming a motion to adjourn passes. If not, we'll just stand and talk.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right. We have a motion to adjourn. So moved. All right. Everyone have a lovely evening. So good to see you all.
You too.
Thank you for the entertainment.
Yes. No problem. I gotta go sit in another, uh, six hours tomorrow of scripted demonstrations about police and fire dispatching. So it is fascinating.
Well, Mil- Milwaukee could use the help, so good luck.
Yes, they could, and that's why we are here. So, thank you all. Have a, have a wonderful evening. Thanks.
Have a great evening.
All right. See ya. Bye.
Bye-bye.